I'll ask, oh, if you're not talking everybody up, you're meeting. Okay, to expedite tonight's meeting, I'll ask those of you who wish to speak to stand up and be sworn in. That includes applicants. It'll be coming up. Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you testify to tell the truth before this commission or so? See, I do. Thank you, he may be seated. Okay, first thing under agenda is the consent of agenda. Did everybody have time to look at the minutes? Yes, if so, I would take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chair McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Okay, our first public hearing is case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash ten. Short-term rental at twenty-seven twelve South Brookside Avenue. Request by Just Like Home Vacation Rentals for a short-term rental. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Before we start, uh, is Mr. Scarborough here? Or anybody here for this case? I don't see him here, so maybe we could just push this to the end of the agenda and then come back to it?
We can do it. Okay. Instead, we will hear case twenty-two dash four hundred dash eleven. Short-term rental at four four zero eight South Mills Street. A request by Cindy Murphy for a short-term rental. Staff, will you give us a report?
Okay, this is an application by Cindy Murphy for a short-term rental at forty-four oh eight South Mills Street. It is, the property is, uh, in the area south of I seventy. It's on, just off of Phelps Road, to the east of Phelps Road. Right at the corner of South Mills and Forty-fourth Terrace. As you can see from the vicinity map, the location of the property. This is the surrounding zonings. Again, this is all single-family. R six, entire area, it's a well-established neighborhood. And this is the aerial photograph of the site. Basically, she wants to operate this short-term rental at this location. Uh, she recently, uh, had moved out of town and, uh, wishes to use this as a short-term rental. Uh, she's going to be still located in the area. And will be, uh, providing self-management for the property, I guess you'd say. Uh, she's worked out the trash pickups with waste management. And various, she's got a double-wide driveway extending from Mills Street to the attached garage. There's enough area in the driveway to park six vehicles off-site. And then two could park along the street. You can't really see from this photograph very well, but this is an older neighborhood dominated by mid-sized homes constructed in the nineteen-sixties. It features an assortment of ranch, split levels and two sto- and two stories. Homes running onto improved streets with sidewalks. She plans on using the Airbnb website only. Uh, the owner will, uh, plans to address possible guest problems through a system of carefully screening guests. Posting quiet hours and providing neighbors with managers' phone numbers. And having an Airbnb support line for the neighbor to report abuse. The property's been inspected by the fire inspector and passed the short-term rental life safety inspections. There are not really any of the short-term rentals in this area, as you can see here in a minute. Therefore, this application falls the density limitations of the city code. Again, this is the aerial photograph of the site. There is, uh, Mills on the right. And then Forty-fourth Terrace on the north side of the lot. Uh, this shows where there's, uh, short-term rentals in the area, there's only one. The kind of the top middle part of the screen, so. Again, this property's been zoned, uh, various forms of, uh, residential since, since it was created, basically. And it's a, house itself is about a thirteen, fourteen hundred square foot. Red brick, yellow-sided house. Um, it has three bedrooms and oc- for an occupancy of six people. Double-wide driveway. Trash pickup is provided by waste management. And, uh, this is a picture of the front of the house. Where here we're standing in, uh, on Mills and looking due west. It's front of the property. This is the north side of the house. We're looking, uh, on Forty-fourth Terrace, looking, uh, south. You can see her backyard goes up at a pretty good, uh, slope there. This is the property on the northwest corner of this intersection, with the applicant's property being on the southwest corner. This is the house on the northeast corner of the intersection. This is the house on the southwa- southeast corner of the intersection. Here, we're looking west up Forty-fourth Terrace. And here, we're looking south down South Mills Street. Staff does recommend approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The business must comply with all safety and other standards established by its section fourteen dash four twenty of the city code. And then the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please? And state your full name and your address.
Cindy Murphy for.
You and I have the same problem.
Cindy Murphy, four four zero eight South Mills Street, Independence, Missouri, six four zero five five.
Thank you, now is that currently where you live?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, tell us anything you would like us to know about the project, and then we'll sure have questions.
Okay, um, well, I have stood before this committee before. Twenty-eight years ago. When I bought this home, I opened a beauty salon. Which I had a very successful business there for twenty-two years. Since then, um, I've become a widow and retired. And, um, I just wanted to see if this endeavor fits my ambition. I feel like hospitality is in my wheelhouse. And, um, just wanted to share my beautiful home and maybe create great guests. Where they, you know, give good reviews and spread the word. Um, I'm very excited about it. I also want to say that, um, I plan on posting quiet hours. And, um, I'm going to be, um, implementing cameras in the home. And the Ring cameras at the front and the back. Um, also, I've ordered noise devices to alert if there's any kind of crazy stuff going on. Um, I will then, once this gets going, if I get it to get going. Um, I will be living north about twenty-five minutes. So they will have access to my number. Um, I also have a good friend that lives right around the corner from this home. That is willing to, um, give her a number if, in case there's like a urgent reason that would take two minutes to get there instead of twenty-five. Also, I do plan on, um, penitention to red flags. For me, that would be poor communication, um, incomplete or deceptive profiles. From, through the Airbnb, um, bad reviews or reluctant to give important or personal information. Also, um, penalties for breaking the number of guest rules. So, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone have questions?
Um, the documentation says you're only going to allow them to use the upper floor, the main living floor?
Yes, mhm.
Okay, so the, the lower floor is basement, garage, will they be able to use the garage or no?
No.
Okay.
They won't have access to the garage.
Alright.
That, it's a finished downstairs area, that's where my salon was.
Okay.
But that will be locked off and they won't have access to that, nor the garage.
Thank you.
They do have a second exit out though, correct?
Yes, yes, there's a back exit.
Okay, Madam Chair. So Enlightened Retreat is you, that's your company?
Yes.
So you're not using a, a management company for this, that's you, okay, thanks.
I'm glad you're getting the sound device, I think that that's a really good idea.
I, I do too.
Seems to be a trend.
Yeah, well, I, I didn't know, I just started searching about how I could manage that. I think it's very important, so, yeah. And they have such things, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Seems like it's the way to go.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I do. So you have a friend that lives, you said about two minutes from you?
Uh huh.
And that will step in if there's an emergency. Have you received any feedback from any of your other neighbors?
I have not. I have not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, this case is closed for the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion or questions of staff? Or would entertain a motion?
I have a question to the staff. Can you tell me how this fits into policies and procedures? Do we have short-term rental procedures?
Well, we have, we have the section in the city code that, in our zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen, that deals with what the minimum standards are for home businesses. And the procedures on how to apply for one. And if, uh, if one is not working out, it may be revoked.
So nothing specific?
Certain minimum conditions that are applied to these. And we also have a maximum, there's a limitation on the number of these, it can be on one block face. Which is basically one street to, to another street with, and it's like one, basically, per block face. But we haven't gotten to that, to that, uh, limit yet.
Have we done any research on how many Airbnbs are in Independence?
Well, we have, uh, a number, I, I don't recall what it is offhand. Somewhere, I would guess thirty-five, maybe?
Is that what's registered, or is that what is available in research?
Went through the planning commission.
Okay.
I can't speak for all the ones that are operating illegally out there.
On the outskirts.
I'm sure there are several.
So, Rick, could I ask that we do research that and find out how many Airbnbs show up in Independence via Google search? So we can have an actual number?
Well, I understand that there may be some limitations on what we can actually do by, um, and I think these are probably more legal limitations as to what we can actually do in trying to find out if somebody's operating illegally. So really, a lot of that has to do more with, is there a complaint from a neighbor or an adjacent property owner? Then we go out and make that determination if they're operating illegally. But, um, we can certainly look and see what we can do to try to determine the total number. But I, but I do know that there's some limitations as to what we can do as a city in trying to, um, how should I say, do the research to determine if somebody's illegally operating, so.
Fair enough, thank you.
I would just say, we, as a body, wrestled with this together when we, um, passed a U D O, was that two years ago?
Maybe three.
Maybe three, and I, so I think we did our due diligence on how many, restricting how many there were, there were in the area. The permits last for a year. If they have issues, they can complain and, and, and so I think we've done a pretty good job managing this.
Yeah, it's gone through two revisions since its original adoption. And actually, we have another revision coming up in, in November.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Next meeting, right?
In December.
Yeah.
October. The next planning meeting.
I was gonna say, we, we do have a revision that'll be coming up in the next meeting. The twenty-fifth meeting. And that does kind of, um, it adds some restrictions and some limitations. And it does clarify some issues that I think maybe, uh, we've all kind of had. And some things that we've, as a commission, I know have already asked applicants to do that we would in theory be codifying. But also some other, um, limitations and/or specifications as to how they can be operated. With, um, the types of, you know, can you have other people subleasing type of things? So, uh, we'll have that to you next week and we'll go through, um, that with the staff report that talks about all the differences and the changes.
Looking forward to that. Okay, any other discussion or entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve case two-two dash four hundred dash one-one. Short-term rental, four four zero eight South Mills Street.
Is there a second?
I second.
With conditions, we're assuming?
Yes, with, sorry.
With conditions.
Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chair McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash eleven. Short-term rental for four four zero eight South Mills Street has been approved. Thank you, and good luck going forward. Yes, you're free to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, case number twenty-two dash two hundred dash twelve. Special use permit for one one six West US twenty-four Highway. Request by Sarah Bay for a special use permit to operate a body art service. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Yes, this is an application by Sarah Bay. To open a body art, body art shop, uh, on twenty-four Highway at one one six West twenty-four Highway. Uh, the aerial, uh, the vicinity map shows this location. It's at the, uh, northwest, excuse me, northeast corner of twenty-four Highway and North Liberty Street. This is the, uh, comfort plan, it shows the, uh, location of the, uh, site. It's actually in an area that is designated for residential neighborhoods. And, uh, the blue box shows its location, I'm sure everybody's been by here a number of times. And, uh, the surrounding zoning, as you can see, this property is on C two and much of the surrounding zoning is also commercial. With the yellow color being some level of, uh, residential. Okay, she is applying to, uh, open this, uh, body art shop, body art shop. It will operate in a semi-vacant building with the other part being personal storage budding twenty-four Highway. At the, on the southeast corner of the property. Uh, a legal, a legal non-conforming house also sits on this property and faces Liberty Street. There's a paved parking lot on the west and, uh, east sides of the property. And a three-car wi- three-car wide driveway sits on the east side of the house with access from the alley. This is kind of a, a floor plan of the building and we'll talk about that. This is a small, single-story commercial building budding the highway. That is longer than it is deep. It's nine hundred square feet structure makes, makes it appear as four buildings. Uh, it has two front doors and two other doors on the rear and east sides of the facade. It is divided into three sections, rooms. Behind the building, there's a small courtyard enclosed, enclosed by a privacy fence. The courtyard can be a, a access from both the parking lot and the driveway. And then again, there's a small, yellow, single-frame, single-story house on the northern portion of the site that faces Liberty. And if you're familiar with this area, this section of twenty-four Highway has many auto-related uses, service and small retail stores. Adjacent nearby uses are small, densely sited, single-family homes to the north. This is the, shows the location of the residential home on the north side of the site. And then there's a parking lot directly south of that. The building that the applicant is going to be in is on the, I guess would be the southeast corner of the site. We've got a, a little small parking lot just north of that. And then the courtyard for the building, just north of the building itself. This is the floor plan of the site, of the building. Basically, the people would come in, probably come in the north doors. They have a main lobby. And then the, uh, body artwork would be done on the, uh, west side of the building with the east side being office and other things. This is an aerial photograph that shows the property. Uh, the, uh, site or building in question is on the lower right. So you can see it's very long and narrow. And then the house is on the north part of the site. You've got parking areas to the, uh, west. Larger parking area to the west and then a small, probably a three-car parking lot just north of the, uh, small commercial building. These are photographs provided by the applicant, that's the front of the building now as it appears. I think previously, the little sections had been painted different colors, but now it's all one color. So it's very close to the road. As you can see of the photograph on the right, the house, closest sidewalk is to the building. This is the parking on the west side of the property. Uh, the people that live in the house also park in this area here, that's to the right, to the left. And then the, uh, parking area on the other side of the building. I guess it'd be the east side of the building. This is the patio area behind the commercial building. And then this is a photograph of the door that leads out into the patio. And then the photographs on the right or the inside of the building, as you can see, it's really essentially one long, open space at this time. And there is, uh, we're inside the building looking out towards the street of twenty-four Highway and then another picture of the inside. And then pictures of the bathroom. Uh, again, this is a small, single-story commercial building. It's been here for unknown number of years. Uh, the, with the area that is a commercial corridor. And, uh, it's going to be just one business in there. Uh, there's a, a limit on the number of body art shops in the city at eight. This, this is, uh, which is an increase from the previous, uh, number, which was seven when the city's population increased. So it's now eight. It's based upon, I think, fifteen thousand per, uh, per shop. Uh, there are currently five active locations in the city. The applicant may hire other, uh, artists later. She and her apprentice will be the only ones working at this location at this time. Okay, the applicant has indicated that, uh, there'll be no construction activity that will take place inside the building. However, that, however, with a special use permit, exterior improvements will have to be provided. These include sealing the parking surface, marking park, parking lot spaces, including a van-accessible space. And then providing landscaping where possible. MoDOT does have some improvements planned for this portion of Long twenty-four Highway. A few meetings ago, we had two properties that had joined each other, they were going to be rezoned, barbed. And that included, uh, MoDOT was going to do some, uh, realignment and some limitations of driveways along section twenty-four Highway. And then put a trail on the north and a sidewalk on the south, I believe. This is in that section that the MoDOT will be improving. But at this time, we don't know how this will, how this property will be affected by those changes. Okay, this is another picture of the outside of the building. Here, we're looking east up twenty-four Highway. This is the small shopping center, uh, directly across the street to the south. And here, we're looking west down US twenty-four Highway. Again, this is the parking area on the, uh, west side of the building. And there's some parking spots there for the tenants of that house, which is right there as you can see. And then here, we're looking north, up at North Liberty Street. And, uh, this is the intersection of this, uh, that is, uh, South Liberty on the other side of twenty-four Highway. There is a light at this intersection. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit with the following conditions. Special use permit is restricted to one one six West twenty-four Highway. They are to construct a masonry trash enclosure adjacent to the alley or in the southwest parking lot area. If they decide they need one, some people just use a roll-out if they're not really trash generators. Provide additional landscape shrubs around the property and where possible. This is particularly in the small planting areas on the east, north and south of the commercial building. And along the fence between the parking lot and the house. Mark and sign all standard and handicapped parking spaces. Seal the cracks in the parking lot. And then the applicant will obtain and maintain all city and state licenses and comply with all health requirements.
Thank you. Um, will the applicant come forward, please? State your full name and your address.
My home address?
Yes, please.
My name is Sarah Bay, I live at eight one six South Ash Avenue in Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. Um, go ahead and tell us whatever you'd like to.
Okay, I think Brian covered an awful lot of it. History of me, I was a critical care nurse for fifteen years at Research Medical Center and got pushed into an administrative role during the pandemic. I was the educator for all of the COVID units and all of the critical care units at the hero hospital.
Can you make sure that you stand a little closer?
I apologize. Um, it was considered the hero hospital of Kansas City, so we were overwhelmed and overloaded. And I made it through the entire pandemic and then decided it was time for a little break and a career change. So we were overwhelmed and overloaded and I made it through the entire pandemic and then decided it was time for a little break and a career change. I spent the last year doing my apprenticeship and so I am licensed in the state of Missouri as a tattoo artist. And I wanted to open a tattoo shop that was clean and safe and a friendly, comfortable environment for people to come in and get tattoos. I know some tattoo shops can be incredibly intimidating and that's not the kind of shop I want to run. Like he said, yeah, we're going to have the lobby on the side, all the tattooing down here. So it's very separated from anything. The office slash where staff can be to eat and everything, so that's separated from the tattoo side. I read through the email that he had sent me, speaking of the things that we need to address. And I've already contacted several asphalt companies to get some bids on the ceiling and the painting of the parking spaces. I was going to call Ted's Trash Services who we plan to use. I do think a rollout service would be appropriate for us. There's really minimal trash. The other thing I have to do is get a Sharps container so I can dispose of my Sharps. And so that's where a lot of the trash would go to too. So I think a rollout would be appropriate for that. And then as far as the landscaping, I don't know if you guys noticed the one picture. The very front of the shop's going to be incredibly tricky. It's like concrete and rock all under there. So I think my biggest plan is just to keep it completely cleaned out and weed-free. And then on the sides of the building, I already have a red bud tree and a huge butterfly bush that's in a pot that needs to be planted. And several things to go along for curb appeal on the front. And then the back, the courtyard is just going to be drastically cleaned up. It needs a lot of work. I don't know, is there any type of certain shrubs that you're allowed to plant or not plant? I don't believe, I'm an avid gardener. If you drove by my house, you can hardly see it behind all the cannes and flowers and stuff like that. So I have all the things I would already want to use for landscaping. I just have to map it out. Some of the things can be planted this fall. A lot of things will have to wait until spring. I'm not sure what else.
He's pretty good.
I do plan to have Josiah, he's on the lease with me and he is going to be my first apprentice. I think it's really important to get him licensed as soon as possible too. And at this time, we don't have plans to add any other tattoo artists to our building.
Okay. I do, my stomach hurts saying this out loud, but I do want to make sure I would not feel right if we don't say it out loud again, that you do understand that it could be by twenty twenty-four that that building has to go.
That's my concern, yeah, and part of the concern of planning any landscaping along that front. Do you think that when they widen that sidewalk, there's potential they'll just take the building?
I think that's a question for the city if, if you could weigh in on that.
Because we were initially very excited about their renovations until I saw that five-foot sidewalk plan.
Yeah, I know right now, I believe they're still working through acquisition process with MoDOT and the property owners all along that stretch. I don't know the percentage that they're at. But my guess is there'll probably would be some impact. I don't know what that will be. It could be as simple as additional right-of-way all the way to, you know, purchasing properties. So, you know, it's just, until it's completed and until they have finalized all the acquisition processes and the agreements, we just really kind of don't know. We just know that there'll probably be some impact to that.
Rick, when will it be completed? When will we know?
So I know that, I believe they're planning to start utility work next year. I believe that's the intent. But again, it all really depends on the acquisition and when they're completed, so.
It was interesting. We have, we have the opportunity to, in the future, purchase this along with the house. And that raises some concerns with me. However, our current lease is two years and I would still like to open and operate for those two years.
Yeah. So the good news is this corridor will get better. So that's great news. The bad news is that building might not exist. The good news is you just come back in front of us and relocate somewhere else.
Okay, okay.
So, but anyway, do any commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Any plans to paint the outside?
Not the outside. They actually just repainted it. We actually, we did ask, we had to get permission to paint anything on the outside. And we asked if we could redo some of the white, which we'll probably wait till spring just because a little bit of the white is flaking off. But all of the gray and black has just been repainted. And we are painting on the inside.
Super cute.
Yeah, I love, I love the front of the building. It's really adorable.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion is closed. Commissioners, any discussion thoughts for the questions of staff or I'd entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In the matter of case twenty-two dash two hundred dash twelve, special use permit, one one six West US twenty-four Highway, for special use permit to operate body art services, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, with, with recommendations?
With recommendations. Conditions.
Thank you. And we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash two hundred dash twelve, special use permit for one one six West US twenty-four Highway has been approved. Good luck. Okay. Back to case twenty-two dash four hundred dash ten, short-term rental for twenty-seven twelve South Brookside Avenue. Request by Just Like Home Vacation Rentals for a short-term rental. Okay, and I need to swear you in. So if you will stand up, raise your right hand. Do you tell, do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. Okay, staff, will you give us a report?
Yes, this is an application by, well, it's called Just Like Home Vacation Rentals. And Rob Scarborough is the owner of that, operator of the company. They seek to, or he seeks to have a, establish a short-term rental on some property on Brookside Avenue just south of twenty-seventh Street. This is a kind of in-between, in that triangle between Westport Road and a little blue, Blue Ridge Boulevard there on the west. This is a zoning for the area. As you can see, it's pretty much a single-family neighborhood. Older neighborhood built primarily in the sixty, excuse me, in the fifties. Again, there's twenty-seventh Street on the top and Blue Ridge Boulevard just behind. This is an aerial of the site. The applicant's property is where the little blue dots or little blue tab is or whatever that's called. And see, it's all single-family homes in this area. There's some commercial institutional-type properties along Blue Ridge Boulevard. Here, this is a aerial of the site. See, the house faces Excuse me. Brookside Avenue to the, to the east. It's a fairly new driveway. It was just out there and the driveway approach was there before, but the driveway itself is freshly paved concrete. There are more short-term rentals in this area. You can see by the little blue dots, there's two to the south and a couple to the southeast and one directly north of this site. But there's none in this probably two or three-block area. Okay, this property's been zoned, single-family residential, basically since the city was incorporated. The house itself is about a thousand square feet. It's a ranch house, has three bedrooms for an occupancy of six people. It was built in nineteen fifty-five. Again, the surrounding area is mostly single-family homes dominated by ranch-style homes built in the fifties. Has a driveway that started, starts out as a single-car wide and then widens out to a two-car-wide driveway. The applicant has means and methods to handle unruly guests and security. His trash pickup will be with Ted's Trash Service. And the site has been inspected and approved by the city's fire inspector, passing the initial short-term rental safety inspection. There, like I said, there are no immediate, there are no short-term rentals in the immediate area. And therefore, the applicant falls the density limitations of the city code. Here we're looking directly at the property, looking west directly at the property. We're out here in Sandy and Brookside. This is on a sunny day. And here we go on a rainy day. As you can see, the apron, the driveway approach was, is concrete that's been there for a number of years. But he has paved the main portion of the driveway, which is on that property, and put it extra wide on that, on that western portion. This is the house that's directly north of this property. Most of the houses along the street actually look very similar to this one. Here we're going to look up, look north up Brookside Avenue. It's kind of a narrow street with no curb and gutter or sidewalks. These are three houses that are across the street from the site. And here we're going to look down Brookside Drive. Goes down there a little ways and then turns right. And the applicant's property is just to our right, just off the screen. This is the house that's immediately south of the site. Again, these houses look a lot alike because they're very similar, ranch-style homes, one-car garages. Staff does recommend approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupational license numbers shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section fourteen, four-twenty of the city code. And then the minimum, maximum occupancy of the, of the premises shall be limited to six.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please? And state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Rob Scarborough. I live at six oh three Quincy Boulevard in Smithville, Missouri. I apologize for being late. I'm on planning and zoning in Smithville and our meetings start at seven. So when Mr. Borders said the case was today, I put it in my calendar for seven o'clock, so I apologize.
That's a good one.
So I've been hosting short-term rentals for about four years. And over that time, we've had over a thousand guests come through. And it has been a learning curve, both good and bad. And, and we have really honed in our ability to be, and I know this phrase gets thrown out a lot, good neighbors, especially when it comes to short-term rentals. And, and that is something that we have really prided ourselves on. At every, every home that, that we own or we manage, we have at least one neighbor that we work very well with. Sometimes we're not able to meet all of our neighbors. But without fail, at every home that we manage in Smithville, Kansas City, Independence and Hannibal, there's at least one neighbor that takes us up on our offer for a friends and family discount. And at the same time, they will reach out to us if they see something that doesn't look right. And that's something that we're, we're really proud of. Actually, this particular property, it's owned by Eisenhower Holdings, which is a company, some investors out of California. And I'm co-hosting for them, so I'm representing them here today. And just north of this property on twenty-sixth Street is where I was born and raised. And my mother just moved after thirty years, just this last November. So this is a neighborhood in an area that I'm very familiar with and so is Independence.
Thank you. You have any questions? Anyone have any questions?
I have a question. So you've been before us before?
I have.
How many do you manage in Independence now?
Currently, we have one off of Overton. And this would be our second. The case that was before you earlier this year that did not get approved.
Right.
They applied for and was approved for a long-term thirty-day minimum lease or, or rental. And right now, that is available on Airbnb for a thirty-night minimum.
So you've got two or three?
Short-term rentals, this would be number two.
Okay.
And then we have what we consider a medium-term rental on, on the one, on the case that was before you earlier.
So if the neighbors have an issue?
Yes.
They call you?
Yes. And I, whenever I do meet a neighbor, I pass out extra business cards because I know neighbors talk. So if there's ever that opportunity for neighbors to pass that word around the property on Overton, that's exactly what happened.
I'm just reminded that there's a limit in our UDO about how many of these you can, is it own or manage?
Well, I think the term is, in the book, is owned.
And it's five, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just.
But the technicality is he doesn't exactly own them.
Well, and, and that technicality could be the same if I started a new LLC. So I could, me personally could have ownership in multiple. But the way it reads now, it's, it's ownership.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any thoughts, questions of staff, or I'd entertain a motion?
Question. Heather, do you remember why the Overton project was, was not passed? I don't, I don't recall.
There was a lot of neighbors here and they were upset because the short-term rental had been being used before they had their permit and it was noisy. And I, I, I think that's what I remember.
Was that the one off Lees Haven Road?
I don't remember where it was, but there was some, it had been used and they had had complaints.
Understood.
Yeah.
Fair, thanks.
I have a question for staff. This is with the recommendation of six short-term leases, leases, six adults. And yet I don't think the driveway would support that and there's no place to park on the road. So can you talk to me a little bit about six people?
Well, the driveway will hold at least three cars. I don't know if the, is the garage open for guests? And the garage is also open for a car, so that's conceivably four cars off the street.
Any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve case twenty-two dash four hundred dash ten, short-term rental, two seven one two South Brookside Avenue with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We got the conditions right on the third one.
Yes. We need Billy.
We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash ten, short-term rental for twenty-seven twelve South Brookside Avenue has been approved. Thank you. Okay. Roundtable. Next meeting is October twenty-fifth and I believe that's where you're going to present new short-term rules and regulations, policies?
Yes.
Ideas? Thank you. And I think that one's going to be a long one as well, correct?
There, there are a few cases.
Or is that the November one?
The, yeah, the November one's probably a little Yeah, the November one's probably a little longer.
Why?
We have four short-term rentals on that.
Four?
Yeah.
These were the two easiest short-term rentals we've had since I've joined the commission.
Exactly right.
Yeah, is there any on the next?
That's true. Okay, anything else?
Uh, staff has no other comments.
Anybody else have anything for the greater good? Welcome again, Lord Dean. It's good to have you. Okay, this planning commission meeting, October 11th, 2022, is adjourned at 6:51 PM.